Creating a community center there, and I think that was something that she was happy to hear.
So we did talk with both the Forest Support Squadron, they manage a lot of the child and youth programs on the base. Right now, they have a lot of their programs spread across multiple buildings. And the way the rules and regulations are now, if they have a contractor providing some sort of care for children or having a class, they have to have a government civilian there to monitor. So if we could condense that to one building, we'd have one person to oversee, so we wouldn't need a lot of different jobs just to be kind of the chaperone. So if we were to repurpose that building, right now, we're really considering pulling together a lot of the different child and youth programs, the after-school programs, into one facility. That would make it a lot better for the Forest Support Squadron logistically, and it would save manpower and some costs there. So if this does go through, we can repurpose that building. We've got a lot of people who are excited about having a building, and this would really be a good place for a lot of those programs, having a central place. So that's kind of where we're looking for now. And we'll go to the Facility Control Board, and they'll make sure all the different units on base have their chance to buy for it. But we think we have a pretty good business case to repurpose that building.
Yes, Mr. Bishop. I would just like probably to state the obvious to the board, that it really is a good problem to have with controversy and wanting to close schools or move kids, because it just demonstrates that our community loves their schools, they love their teachers and their principals, and everybody at those schools. So while it's a difficult situation, it's a great problem to have, to have people love ASD schools.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Hallman.
I want to ask, when you said waiting on a decision from the board, you mean a decision to move ahead with this possibility?
Just as possible. They wanted it to be possible before they talked.
Unless it's vote to close the school before we have the discussion with the public. The exact order of this can be?
If I might, the base was waiting really until this event, so the board would be informed of what the administration is recommending. The timeline is non-action on the 8th of October, and then action on the 22nd is what we're proposing. So this will give Colonel Dany an opportunity and the chain command to communicate with the population. And just to comment, we will be there at the same meetings to make sure that we're conveying what ASD is.
Not to get in front of you.
Right, not to get in front of you.
I'll say several years ago, when we were doing a boundary change, and I was with Mr. Nielsen at some of those meetings, I'm going to say they were fierce.
I do recall those stuff. Especially, yes.
Great, there's no other.
People are passionate about it, but there is a positive aspect to that.
There's no other comments or questions, Colonel Dany, thank you. Mr. Donley, sorry. Okay, thank you, I appreciate you coming up.
Thanks.
Mr. Donley.
I just wanted to go back to a point you raised, Madam President, about the children who are going to Inlet View that are not within that geographical area for that particular school. And I just wanted to check my understanding of the chart here. So there's about 80 students that are attending Inlet View that are not in that region. And if you subtract that 80 from the 244 enrollment, you're down to 164, which the capacity of the school's 170. So if it wasn't for that, then the school would be within its existing capacity. Is that correct?
But the 64 students are students that opt out of Inlet View. If you were to add those back in, then your enrollment for all the kids that fall within the boundary exceed the capacity of the existing.
Why would you assume they would switch if they're making the choice now to go someplace else because they like where they're going? Why would they all of a sudden opt back in?
I'm not making that assumption, I just made an observation in that chart, that if you had every student in that catchment area wanting to go to Inlet View, the school's not big enough for that population.
Okay, thank you.
So if I might transition now to Abbott Loop, and what the administration is proposing is that Abbott Loop, the building, be replaced with a new structure. And the recommendation is that this be a K8 blended model school. And I will pass to Mr. Nielsen, and we also have Mr. Arthur Sosa, who is the principal of Abbott Loop, available to make comment to that.
And while Arthur makes his way up to the big table, I will share again my excitement and pleasure to be here to talk about this concept with the full board this afternoon. One of the things, when you look at, again, equity and opportunity and access, when we look at the district as a whole, and we look south of Tudor Road, you see that the number of alternative and optional and immersion programs, they are not as many, they are fewer than north of that. And it's not so much that I'm looking at another K through 8 program, because I think we serve those south of Tudor Road fairly well with Polaris and Northern Lights ABC. But I am looking at a program that would really excite and enthuse our students and our families with a 21st century learning modality, and that be that blended concept at the school. And I think I shared with you either individually or in two's and three's, when we're talking about a blended concept, we're looking at 24-hour internet access, we're looking at digital classrooms, we're looking at flip classrooms where much of the learning can take place at home, and then it is shared, and the teacher acts as a facilitator in the classroom. When we're looking at the K through 8 model, we are looking at our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders as student leaders, entrepreneurs, working with the younger students. One of the big things that I really want to focus on, and I'd like to bring your attention to, when we do talk about zoning in and zoning out of an attendance area, we see a large number of students zoning out of Abbott Loop. And not only would we be creating opportunity and equity and access for students in that part of town, hopefully and ideally, we'll be able to recapture some of those schools. And I see that he's writing furiously over there, but I'm going to pass this off to Mr. Sosa, because that's one of the things that he and I have been talking about, and I know that he's excited about creating opportunities for those families in his neighborhood. Should I talk a little bit about that, Mr. Sosa?
Sure. So is it on?
Yeah.
So, you know, at Abbott Loop, I don't know if you had an opportunity to go there, but it's, the community is, I shared this with some of the parents and some of the teachers, and are really excited about the idea of having a brand-new Abbott Loop. And actually, going back to Shannon Brigham, when he talked about the demographics and the multifamily dwellings that are increasing in that area, and the need of having an Abbott Loop in the future of it, it was just really exciting to hear that. To think that, you know, we could have a brand-new two-story building and be able to be focusing on, you know, 21st century online learning, it's just exciting, as exciting as it comes. And, you know, in the transition period too, you know, there's sharing information about that, the possibility of us going to service high school, and then the resources there that would be there if that's what the board decides and whatnot. Just, there's a lot of excitement in the air. So I'm open to any questions that anyone might have.
Ms. Hildy? My question's on the blended learning model and the 24-hour access, is that providing students with internet at home, and then more on the flip classrooms? I guess I may be not familiar enough with that.
Sure. So when we talk about providing opportunities, so as you know, right now Abbott Loop is a Title I school, but most likely, we might lose that Title I status for the following year, I've been told. So there's a great need in the community, a great need to have the internet access in the immediate vicinity. But again, it's talking like Mr. Nielsen was talking about, building that equity and that access to computers inside the building as well as out, is really something that is needed in our community.
How would they have internet?
How would they have internet at home, if they're supposed to be learning at home?
Oh, regarding the details behind that, I don't know.
There actually are some programs and some joint ventures that you can offer two hours of free internet to kids to get on our, and let them go through our servers as a vehicle, back out, so it wouldn't be, you know, global universal. But on that end, that's Mike working with our providers to garner that service for kids.
Technically, you can hotspot, right?
No, there's some that actually have a card and a code that you can, I mean, there's different programs around the United States that are either hotspots or a system to get in through our internet, back out to, you know, so it wouldn't be universal internet, it would be for the programs and things that were direction for instruction. But it would be free to the family, a lot of these programs. So that's in the early stages, but not a difficult task.
The other part of the question, flip classrooms?
Everyone wants to, we're so excited, everyone wants to answer, so. You all right, Dr. Bishop?
Yeah, I spilled my coffee also.
I probably shouldn't have mentioned it, I apologize. So the flip classroom is, for example, you would have, say, an online lab, and you could then, from the privacy of your own home, you could actually do the coursework at home with a, either it could be a live teacher over the internet, or it could be with an artificial intelligent or a machine-thinking teacher during the lab. So you're doing them the work at home. The students then would come the next day, and instead of taking up, traditionally, you might do the lab in class, and then the next day or the days after, you'd have the discussion. Well, now you're doing the work at home, and then you're coming home and you're having the synthesis of the lab, and that's the discussion in the classroom. And then from there, that generates your next learning opportunity. So that's the flip classroom. Some of our high schools, I think of South, for example, they have a number of features, our own Larissa Wright, who's our curriculum specialist for English Language Arts, that's one of the things that she would often do, is she would assign a book, they would do the work at home, and then they would come, and that would be like a Socratic seminar discussion. And that's just one example of that.
A math example that often works is, when we go to our classrooms, there's instruction on how to do a problem. And a teacher could do it once or twice, but there's some kids, well, it would be filmed, the instruction part is filmed, so I can go home and I can re-hit that as many times as I want, so I'm getting that just where I'm viewing it, like I would in the classroom. Then when I go back the next day into the classroom, rather than sending the homework home to do the problems by yourself after getting instruction in school, you would first listen to the instruction at home, come in, and do the problems with your class. So that's how it's flipped. So not just, you know, it could be homework, it could be any kind of instruction. So the instruction is via technology, and then, have you ever used, kids use Khan Academy, or they will in the future, yeah. So it's a Khan Academy kind of model.
I think it's great, because then I won't hear, "That's not the way the teacher does it." You'll have the example. Any other questions?
If I might, just to add a couple of additional comments. Timeline-wise, we would be looking to have planning and design money on the bond proposition for 2019, and the construction, we would look to come back in 2021 for that bond. To get the member Hildes' question on just some of the cost aspects of it, currently, the board approved and the public subsequently voted approval of about $3.9 million to do a fire suppression system installation in the building. That based on guidance from the Fire Marshal. Before that, the administration did come forward for the last-year bond, and had, I believe, identified just over $30 million or more involved building life extension for Abbott Loop. Again, it's a 1958 construction, it's got uncommonly low ceiling, for those that have been into the building, you know what I'm talking about. And that project, in addition to the building life extension, was to raise that ceiling to a higher, greater height, if you will, in addition to all of the building life extension improvements that would go with that. So that's where we are. The project, as it's currently estimated right now, sits at $42.5 million.
So I have a question. We have already bonded for that money, correct, and received it? So how would we, we need to be transparent with the community, and are we able to reallocate those funds?
Thank you. The, that $3.9 million, that is authorization, it is not sold bond authorization, correct? So it's just assumed that the board were to approve moving forward on the planning and design, and then subsequently, the construction, and those were approved by the public. The board would have the option to spend that $3.9 million or not. That money is 100% payback by the public, so the board could simply decide that we're not going to spend that money. You do have the authority, though, by language from Bond Council to do that.
Ms. Hildy? That estimated cost of $30 million for the building life extension, does that include the $4 million for fire suppression, and over what timeframe does that cover?
To the President, it was inclusive of a fire suppression system integrated into the ceiling. And I believe that we had looked at that being potentially a two-year construction process, just because of the very invasive need to basically lift the ceiling, you're going to have to completely rework the framing.
So my question is, when I look at this six-year CIP draft, what I don't see on here, and what I've heard in the past, is that possibly we'll have to build a school in South Anchorage, West Park area possibly. I know that that area is growing tremendously. And is that something we're thinking is going to be further out, or is that more of an immediate need? What are we looking at?
To the President, right now, we have West Park templated, it's not on the six-year plan. I believe we have it templated for year seven, so seven years out from now. Now, the thing about the six-year capital improvement plan, the board gets the opportunity to come back and review this every year. So if it becomes apparent that because of population growth in the south, that the board were to decide that that is more important than other projects, then that could be moved forward.
Any other questions for Abbott Loop? Okay, thank you.
Madam President, thank you.
So if I might transition to Inlet View, we talked a lot about this school in this meeting. This would be proposed on the same timeline, 2019, for planning and design, and then 2021 coming forward for instruction money on that bond. This would be a K6 program. And the principal is present, but the school is also put in for an IB program, and that currently is working its way through the administration.
Ms. Hildy? When is that IB expected to be placed? And then my expectation, if it does become an IB school, is that the demand is going to increase dramatically. I don't know that the proposal has, I don't know if it has enough room for that.
I might go forward.
The IB program is actually coming up within the next month or so. It's gone through the district processes to be presented to the board alongside of these French immersion. Both requests are moving its way forward. So I'll turn it over.
So the IB program will be presented to the school board on October 22nd. So and the proposal will be to start the IB candidacy status with the organization for the school year 2019, for next school year.
Just on the capacity of the proposed building to absorb that increased demand?
So what the administration has assessed with instruction is that there is a high demand for Inlet View now, but also, again, based off the projections from the city's long-range planners and the anticipated growth, we think 300 is the right-sized school to accommodate that catchment area.
Ms. Mitchell? So I know we talked about this before, but I'm not sure where it is sitting. If we do an elementary IB school, then we need a middle IB school to lead into West. So have you talked to either of those schools?
Actually, we already have an IB at, we're going the opposite way. We have an IB program at West, we have an IB program at ROMIC, and then this would be down at Inlet View. At ROMIC.
It is my understanding that there is not, that there was some work done towards the middle years program, but I don't, I'm not sure if it's currently happening at the middle school level.
And there lies another decision that the board's going to have to make, because by high school, the actual interest is more on the AP side than IB side, and I could probably have Kirsten Johnson, if she's here, speak to that. And so I believe what ROMIC has done is just focused on preparing kids for high level, because then they go either way, they can go into AB, AP, or IB. But ROMIC prepares kids at a high level to be able to take those courses.
Hi, everyone. So at ROMIC, there was some initial work done to look into IB as a program, and ultimately, what ended up happening is it became a resource issue in terms of staffing and funding for the training, and so that's why the program wasn't necessarily sustained. But at West High School, our IB program is actually growing at the high school level. Last year, we had close to 30 graduates from the IB program, and this year, we're looking at closer to 45 graduates out of the IB program at West. So there is definitely an interest in that program, but it would definitely come down to a board decision about what you're willing to fund, because it is a program that requires training and staffing, and all of those, as you know, cost some funds. So that's where we're at.
So this is all premature, because we're not there yet. But I know ROMIC makes sense, just because of its proximity to West, and because they had started going down that road, but they are pretty full with the immersion programs, and is there, would there be space at ROMIC for that program?
I think by the time we got to that, if we started a K through 6 program at Inlet View, we'd be able to build that in and see where our staffing and room could fit. It's hard to say where it would be, you know, five or six years from now when we start. Yeah. And that was what I was going to say, as Dr. Bishop mentioned, Central could be a location for that, if there's an interest in putting it there. But yeah, you're right, there are a lot of programs housed at ROMIC right now.
Yes, Ms. Hildy? Do the parents who are supportive of the IB program at Inlet View, are they wanting middle school IB in the long-term plan for their children?
Yes, they do. And if I may interject, I know Ms. Royland is here, we've had quite a few conversations about also the middle years program maybe happening at Central, so we are open to those two options as well. And yes, my parents are looking, there's a high interest in, you know, 100% support for the IB program at Inlet View, and they are also just kind of waiting, you know, what would be the process to get the middle years program at the middle school level.
Any other questions or comments on Inlet View? My only question is, we're possibly putting in a program that we don't have capacity for yet, and we're already overcapacity. Are we not going to take any other new students into this program and just?
That's an excellent question, and I think that's what Member Hildy was also getting at. And I use Campbell STEM as an example, that's a neighborhood program that has emphasized in STEM. And initially, they were a little undercapacity, there was enough interest, and through the lottery system, we were able to really gauge and get that hard data to really guide us then, when it came to staffing. So I was able to provide another staff member there. So in my mind, if we're looking at building a structure that would house 300 students, and whether the board decided they did want to move forward with an IB program or not, we have shown with the simple fact that we are already at 143% capacity, that families want to go to Inlet View for a variety of reasons. I think that would probably be definitely icing on the cake if we had an IB program there, but even if we didn't, I think we would be able to, I think, I'm confident that we'd be able to fill the capacity. And if we do have an IB program, back to Member Hildy's question, yes, then we really would be looking at what we can fit in the space. If we can fit the students in there, if there's space available, then the lottery process would allow for that. But if not, the lottery process also allows for us to say, well, this is the room that we currently can eat. So I think as far as capacity is concerned, we would have that covered either way, whether it's an IB or not an IB school.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I think that answers all our questions on Inlet View.
So the last recommendation, not including the six-year plan and the bond proposition, is a proposed boundary adjustment between Homestead Elementary and Ravenwood Elementary School. And in short, what we have here is a situation where we've got two schools that are probably within three miles of each other as a crow flies, but you've got a very significant difference in the student populations, they're both outstanding programs. I think in this example, what we're looking at really is relieving pressure on Ravenwood Elementary. Not only does the school currently have a very large enrollment, but there's some significant future housing development around Ravenwood here in the near future that will just create additional stress on the staff and student population. So what we're proposing in short is that there is a neighborhood that is between Crestview Lane and Eagle River Lane, and you can see it depicted on the screen. As of last year, there are 84 elementary-age kids that fell within that boundary. And what the administration is proposing is that geographic area be rebounded to Homestead Elementary, beginning in the 2020, 2021 academic year. So not this year, not the next academic year, but the following year, this change would be implemented. So what does this really amount to? In short, it amounts to busing that would go to Ravenwood, that supports that neighborhood, would go to Homestead. Families that currently send their students to Ravenwood, if they choose to continue to send kids to Ravenwood, that's certainly their option. New families coming in with elementary-age kids or to the district, those kids would be, they would be assigned to Homestead beginning in this academic year. We do have the principals here, Jane Stewart and Kim Batista, if there's anything that they can respond to or answer, but we're happy to entertain any questions or comments from the board.
Ms. Mitchell? So a couple of questions. If you do make this boundary change, will that, Ravenwood would still be at 92%. So would that, the anticipated construction, would that push them up again? Or does that boundary change address this? And the second question is, is the enrollment at Ravenwood, they're at 101% now, is that all just zone to kids, or do you have kids who zone into Ravenswood? Or get zoning, that's just for?
So to answer your first question, it will alleviate, and it makes an assumption that all 84 kids would go from Ravenwood to Homestead. We know that's not going to happen. We think it'll decrease the population, it'll start to level. In terms of the future expansion, absolutely, I think that will create additional pressures on Ravenwood. So it's not going to completely correct it, but it will reduce it.
So the boundary change you're looking at does not include that potential construction?
No, because, in the near-term housing construction, quite frankly, is right on the other side of the fence from Ravenwood, and it's right there. So, and those are going to be multifamily dwellings that the builder's already planned here in the next year, two years to construct.
So I guess my question is, if you're going to make a boundary change, is this enough? Because we don't want to do it again.
And I'm not, you know, trying to not be completely upfront on the response here. You know, some other topics, and Dr. Bishop, with your concurrence, and please jump in, the district is also evaluating creating a sixth-grade program at Greening Middle School, which will also take some of the sixth-grade population in that area. I mean, it's not just Ravenwood, it's got a pretty high enrollment. Alpenglow, Eagle River Elementary, they're all pretty densely populated, and that would And that would help also to bring these numbers down to in the 90 percentile, we think.
Madam President, this, not only in, as you know, in the Eagle River, Trugack area, we have one middle school with a sixth grade and then one, essentially, we can call it a junior high, seventh and eighth. And there has been requests from the families over time. And the schools had shared that they choose which way. It's difficult to have a straight sixth-grade classroom, it's usually 5'6". So doing, we wanted to start with maybe a lottery at first to see with 120 kids, if it opened, could, would there be interest? When we said that, other middle schools that aren't in that side of town would also like to try that in the South Anchorage area. So that might alleviate the need for that new building into the future. So there's lots of alternative ways, rather than rebuilding or building on, that we're trying to think that actually matches the market. My understanding is that when the change to middle school happened in the east, that it wasn't liked elsewhere, but then there's some people that want it. So we were gonna let the market determine that, open up a few slots, see if they're used. If they are, we can make another decision to move forward. But treat it as a lottery. And if the folks that are actually in buildings who have sixth graders wanna talk, as well as middle school, sorry to put you on the spot. I mean, it was just an idea to assist in alleviating that. But that was an idea that came from a meeting with the principals. Hey, Kirsten, is that okay to talk about? Does that would sort of have something to do with your?
I just, I need to be cognizant of time here, so, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I'd like to turn it over to Bobby and the other principals. We had a group community meeting regarding whether or not to do this lottery. And I think that everybody's really on board with this idea, so I'll let them think that.
Well, I'll start. And I think we've had a lot of conversation about this. And for schools like Homestead, my fifth-grade students going into the sixth grade have two different options. About half of my Homestead boundary goes to Merrill Lake for sixth grade. And the other half remains at Homestead for sixth grade. And then they go to Greening for seventh grade. And so it does create this unusual situation. And we feel like if the students all went to that sixth-grade middle school experience, that they would have the academic offerings, it would be more equitable in that experience. And even though we work very hard to make sure our sixth graders have a very rich and deep experience, I do think it would be a little bit different if they were able to go to middle school.
Yeah, we do have quite a few students that go to maybe Homestead, fifth grade, and then they go to Merrill Lake, sixth grade, and then they come to Greening, seventh grade. So that is a pretty noticeable event, yeah. And I just think, just from incidentally talking to some of our parents in our community, there's a lot of interest among our parents in doing this. And I think starting out with a lottery is a great way to just see how much interest there is in sixth graders attending Greening. I think academically, it's a win-win situation. Student activities, I think is a great situation for our kids if we had sixth graders. And I look at programs like band and orchestra. If we had sixth graders, those two programs are already growing as they are now. And I think if we just gave sixth-grade students the opportunity to participate in things like band and orchestra, I think it'd be great for our community. So there's a good bit of interest.
Yes.
The kayak.
Yeah. Lisa Prince, who's also an Eagle River principal, she's on the kayak committee. And she also suggested, she was a part of our meeting of principals and district-level administrators. And I think the other thing that's nice about the model of letting students lottery is that they can still take buses. We don't have to put any additional bus routes in. So there's already, there's already a lot of infrastructure built in for kids to make that choice. And I think that if we can provide some more opportunities for kids that way.
Is Ravenwood, is that all kids who are zoned in? Or do you have some kids who are in the area? Or do you have some kids who ask for zone exemptions? And how many of your 491 students are there through zone exemptions?
Probably about 30 at the most, but I have a lot of staff.
I can answer this question.
Oh, awesome.
Ravenwood, Jane gets credit on that one. 145 students zone out, 74 zone in.
And Ms. Nelling, you had a question or comment?
I did, I just, I'll just put, it's like three of them. What is the capacity of Greening and how much can it handle for a sixth grade? What is the capacity of Alpenglow? And what other boundaries, you know, might we want to look at? And then when are we going to vote on this Homestead/Ravenwood boundary potential? And why wait one year out? Why not do it next year?
I can take these sequentially, or I can answer them. The recommendation would be to vote on the 22nd of October as an action item. And why wait? I think, I think based on conversations, it was intended to give families an opportunity to kind of socialize and accept. Now, if the board, we could take an approach similar to what we're proposing for J-Bear. We could accelerate to another year. I mean, that's certainly feasible as well. I guess, I guess it comes down to what the community is supportive of in terms of time, busing. Right. And that's what it really, again, what it comes down to is where the buses go, that support, that specific neighborhood. So two years from now is when we would propose that they go to Homestead vice versa.
Would we support it initially with a bus route to? So the initial, basically, you give kids a couple of years to matriculate out. So those that would change no matter what, and they think it's a great idea, they would go. Those others that are holding on because they're at the end of their academic career at that school, they would have a transition time for your older students. It's easier for your younger students to move. It's more difficult for the students who have spent five, four years in a school. So basically, the board is doing a soft start to it.
So I think to answer that question, we would certainly find a way to accommodate.
So at this time, I'm really looking at our time. And the board has a lot to discuss during our housekeeping. And I want to thank everybody for their comments. What I would recommend at this time, if we can do this, is we're looking at presenting this to the Assembly on the 20th. Could we move that non-action item to October 22nd and then voting the 1st of November so that we can have another work session to finish this?
Yes.
Is the board in agreement? I think there's just more discussion here, and we need longer time. And we're running out of time tonight. Yeah, so we could also, on October 8th, when we have the non-action item, that's a time that we can discuss it further also.
I just wanted to have one more comment on overall six-year plan. And that's, as soon as I can figure with my math, it would, the six-year plan would result in about a $61 million increase in total debt on part of the school district.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I want to thank everybody for coming to the table and sharing with us. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on. And Tom, I apologize that Mr. Ross, you didn't get your presentation completely through. But we will either change this, would the board like to do another work session? Or would you like to discuss this in non-action items?
Madam President, I think there's, to be timely and to not put off the other folks at, like IB, and it would just move your charter schools and everything back, that it may be during the non-action time, pull it and just really finish this discussion at your regular school board meeting, if you'd like, unless you prefer this, a work session.
Nope, that's the reason I made the suggestion of what everybody else wanted to do. So are we good with that? Just having this discussion during our non-action items on the 8th?
On the 8th?
Yes. Okay. All right, so that's the plan. Okay, we're gonna move forward with, there's a couple of things we need to discuss in our housekeeping. First of all, we need to discuss, we're gonna call this, because some of this housekeeping is not really housekeeping. It's housekeeping when we talk about certain things, such as what we're talking about right now. But when we're bringing up new topics and such, how would you like to list this on the agenda so that individuals understand that we're, it's not just housekeeping items, which are everyday-type things? But it could be, you know, an open discussion. I mean, I'm just not sure. Does anybody have a recommendation very quickly?
What, what was that? Sorry. Just the last line, just the last.
Okay. So right now, we have this section of the work session referred to as housekeeping. And it's not all housekeeping because we're introducing new topics, we're discussing different things. And housekeeping is more what we're doing now, about what do we wanna call this? You know, it's kind of everyday things. So what would we like to put on the agenda to define that that's really different from housekeeping than what we're doing? Open discussion? I don't know.
I don't care.
Okay. All right, so we'll just come up with something, Katie and I, we'll put it on there. And if you guys don't like it, you can let me know. Okay? So the next item we have is, we have talked about, the last board meeting, we talked about board vacancies. And one of the things that we need to look at is, in preparation of possibly having a board vacancy, is our questions that we would propose to applicants. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what happens with a vacancy. And so board members have to appoint a replacement within 30 days of the notification, and they have to be sworn in. No later than five calendar days after the vacancy. We have to advertise it in the local media and the district's website. So we're talking ADM, that sort of thing. The board shall accept applications for 14 days following the initial advertisement of the vacancy. And then at the close of 14-day application period, the board shall publicly announce the names of all applicants. And all these applicants are vetted through the municipality to make sure they meet the requirements to be placed as an interned board member. Within 11 calendar days after a deadline for applications, the board shall hold a special meeting for the purpose of filling the vacancy. And then after discussion and debate by the board, the board will vote on each applicant. All applicants receiving at least four votes in the first round of voting will advance to the second round. In the second round of voting, if there's a tie among two or more applicants with the greatest number of votes, but at least four, all other applicants shall be eliminated. So this will be posted on our website. But part of the process of this is we do have written interview questions. And the last time that this was done was in March 27, 2013. So I sent this out to all the board members to get any input on if we would like to change this, add to it, eliminate questions, whatever. And so we did have Ms. Hildy brought forth two questions that you will see on, actually, I think it's page three. And Ms. Hildy, would you like to read those questions?
Sure. So one of them was, and this comes up when people are campaigning, so I think it's fair for people to answer it to us because I know it matters to people. What are your views on sex education in public schools? And to what extent should your group, should groups not affiliated with the district be able to present sexual health-related educational materials or instruction to ASD students? And the other one was, why do you think some students do well in school and others struggle? And how would the school board address that disparity? Which I was kind of surprised that wasn't on there, in fact.
So any comments on those two questions? Let's take the first one first. Okay, so I do have a concern with that one because we do have that vetted in our policy, our school board policy. And so really, as school board officials, unless we're gonna change the policy, we are following the policy and those guidelines. And I don't know that it's relevant to selecting the next board member.
And I'll say, I don't disagree with that. I just, when I saw that voucher question, I thought, well, are we just pulling questions that aren't present issues? And then if it is, you know, those always go hand-in-hand. So I thought to be a fair reflection of what community members ask for in the regular election cycle, it would match that.
And actually, the recommendation is to take that voucher question off because it's not, when that was on there, there was a lot going on in the legislative.
So I'm fine with that. I don't need that, I mean, if those are both off there, I think that reflects present issues.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donlin?
Well, Madam President, I was just gonna make the point that board member has the authority to propose amendments or changes to existing board policy. So just because we have a policy that dictates a particular issue doesn't mean that it isn't relevant to people coming on the board. Because as a board member, they're gonna have the authority to propose changes to it.
But isn't that kind of, we're saying, based on your answer, whether we would support you? And that's really more of a individual board members' right when they get on the board? It's not a question that we should vet them, whether they're eligible for the board by their answer?
I personally definitely think that, I like the second question a lot because we do have a lot of achievement gaps in our district. And I think it is important for somebody to think about how they might be able to impact that. And I do agree that the first one, I think I would prefer to leave that off. And I think probably at this point, given that there is no, there is no legislation around the vouchers, I think that probably is better to take off as well.
These are my two least favorite questions, campaign. So, but if, you know, but people ask them because it matters to people. And if we were going to ask them, then I think, you know, they go either.
You do have the opportunity to ask a question of your own. That could be your question instead of a written initial question.
And the voucher wasn't on there, I'm fine. I think they kind of go hand-in-hand in the last two election cycles. And this is a person who can run for an incumbent seat. So I think it's, you know, it would be prudent if they went hand-in-hand. But if they're not on there, it's fine.
Okay. Any other comments? I do agree with number two, I think that's a great question. Thank you, Member Hildy. So are all in favor of putting the second question? We can't vote, but just raising hands, of putting the second question on the interview? On the interview? Yeah, okay. The next one that was recommended by me, and I'm gonna word this a little differently. And it just says, what time commitment are you able and willing to invest in your job as a board member? And are you willing or able to travel to Juneau? And I don't wanna say lobbying for funds, but to meet with legislators. But then after a discussion we had today, I don't know that that's necessary. But sometimes, as a board member, travel is required. And so I don't know if that's something we wanna put on there or not, but I just added it.
Based on our discussion earlier, maybe that should be worded more as, you know, are you willing to engage with our legislators to discuss the needs of the school district?
Isn't that covered in number two, what time commitment, are you willing to invest?
And that's, and I added that just kind of on the end of that question. But we don't have to, it's just a, and after our discussion earlier, I'm thinking maybe it's not necessary.
And, no, what do the rest of you think? Is it something, should we specifically see if people are willing to?
I think that could be a personal question, but I don't think it's a part of the job requirement.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And you're right, it's not part of the job requirement. Here, are there any other questions that you would like to address? I did give everybody the weekend, but at this time, we could make any suggestions if you'd like.
I think this is really comprehensive.
Okay, well, we're gonna move forward with the changes that we recommended, adding number two. And that will be the only change, other than removing number eight, which is share your thoughts on the statewide education voucher idea.
So number two's will stay the same?
Yes, number two will stay the same, but number two, Ms. Hildy's recommendation will be added to the list. Yes, and eight is off. Okay? So at this time, we have a few more minutes. And I always like to open it up to board members. members, if they have anything that they'd like to bring forward or discuss, or possibly bring up for further discussion. Ms. Hildy?
I, I know this was addressed in the Board Connect, but I took it to visit with the guy who wrote the letter about weighted grades. I just happened to be in the office when he was dropping it off. And I had two concerns that I don't think that we've quite addressed yet. One is that if somebody goes, like, from, like, say Diamond High, and they took an AP class, and they go over to PIDEA or an unweighted grade school, they get bumped into the top 10 because now their grade is higher. So, I, I've talked to a couple of kids who went there, and they said they're valedictorian to somebody who just showed up senior year, and who hasn't taken the same level of classes that those top 10% at PIDEA. And we're talking like four kids, it's like a graduating class of 40. So, it's a very competitive, where if those same people are at Diamond, they'd be in the top 10, no problem, you know? So, those people get bumped down at the, somebody who just shows up kind of in the 11th hour. So, that's a concern to me, that somebody can bring a weighted grade to a school where there's no weighted grades. The other one is that we've talked about Raven, or PIDEA as being a statewide correspondence school, and when I talk to people and like, say, this is a great thing, my understanding is that it's kind of similar to the other statewide correspondence schools out there. But in talking to the parent, he suggested that the other ones allow for weighted grades, and then PIDEA wouldn't be allow, you know, having weighted grades. So, it's not really a equal comparison, and if I'm going to share that information, I want to be clear on what I'm sharing.
I'll get the information on that. There's not going to be an easy answer, really, the, you know, by the time you, you know, the AP is taking, the AP is essentially higher level than a freshman level 111 at UAA. So, I think they were honoring that, and that the credit, you automatically get credit at UAA if you pass, if you're taking an AP, which is probably even a higher level than college 111. You have to get a 3, 4, or 5 for a college to accept it. So, we, we could look into it. It was a recommendation from a group, we'll send it back to that, that group, but there's never an easy answer with weighted grades and grades because they also go by the strength of schedule, strength of your coursework, and the strength of a coursework with an AP is much higher, believe it or not, than a transfer in credit of a college. So, we don't like to talk about that and believe that, but I bet our high school teachers' AP are much love, higher level than English 111 or Math 151 or whatever. So, we'll, we'll take it back to the secondary people that work with this because it came from that recommendation from that group.
And I understand the, you know, the difference of the rigorous level of courses. My concern is a weighted grade going to a non-weighted grade school, and then, you know, that person becomes valedictorian because they one time took an AP course, and these other people who've been pursuing, you know, higher level of college classes, they, they didn't go do that, you know? They didn't have the opportunity. So, we can, that's a current concern.
That's a great concern, and we'll look at that. Kids transferring just all kinds of, it hap, yeah. So, that, that's pretty universal, but we'll come back with the recommendations from the secondary level and solutions that they recommend.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Are there any other guests, Mr. Donlin?
Some months ago, I brought up the issue of GoMath, and there was a report, the administration did, but I want to dive into it a little bit more. I'm really interested in learning more about the case for GoMath versus Saxon Math because I'm still hearing a lot of feedback from parents that they like Saxon Math over GoMath, and I'd like to know why we're using GoMath, what's the case for using it instead of Saxon?
All right. Dr. Bishop, what last, find that information for us. Who's the math program? Yeah, what was the math program we had before GoMath? I can't remember, what's the math program we had before GoMath?
Everyday Math.
Oh, yeah, that was the one, believe me, you weren't here, so. Okay. All right, anything else? All right, if not, we're going to move on to our recognition of staff and children and whoever else. And then, don't forget, board, we need to come back and move into executive session.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deana Bishop, and I serve as the superintendent of the very best school district in the state, if not the nation. And we celebrate at this point in time at each of our board meetings called a Focus on Staff and Students. And it was a few years ago that the school board made a decision that in discussion of what makes ASD great, it was the people, it was our people, whether they're our community people, our staff people, our young people, our students. And so, we want to be sure to share the great things that they do. So, without further ado, please come forward, Dawn Wilcox. Woo! And I'm going to talk a little bit about Dawn, but we've seen her here, she's testified. I think two years ago, I met you in starting a new program at her school, so fantastic, she brought students with her to share the great things they do. But let me tell you about Dawn. She has been awarded the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. It is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade mathematics or science teacher, including computer science programmers out there, teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. Up to 108 teachers are recognized each year in our entire nation, and Dawn is one of them. She is the 2000.
Finalist.
Okay, yeah. Well, you won it for our state. How's that? Yeah. She's one of the 108, but the, one of the most notable in the state of Alaska. So, she's a finalist and a second-grade teacher at Campbellstem Elementary in ASD. Her 20 years as an educator, Dawn has taught a diverse population of students in the highly gifted program Title I, and as a science instructional specialist at the STEM department. She's been actively involved in promoting hands-on science education beyond the classroom. She helped create the proposal for Campbellstem Elementary, the first STEM elementary school in Anchorage. Sorry, I had a list when I was little, and some words, some Rs are really odd for me, so, sorry. Bringing science to life for her students and making a difference in our community are guiding goals for Dawn. She and a colleague were recently awarded an Anchorage Parks Foundation grant, which fabulous, I saw that as well, along with their students, and they've upgraded Wolverine Park with two outdoor learning labs, bird nesting boxes, improved trails, as well as signage. Congratulations on being named the 2018 PMS T Finals for the state of Alaska. Thank you for sharing your love of science and all that you do for students. You make ASD great. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'm really thankful to be part of Anchorage School District for a lot of reasons, but it's really been great to work with our school and our students for so long, but especially at Campbellstem. So, we're doing great things for kids, and I think there's thousands of educators all over the district that are doing wonderful things.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Can we take a picture with your principals here? Can we take a picture with you? Is that all right? And your principal as well, please come up. She's going to look her best. Oh, thank you so much. And at this time, would the real football team from Diamond High please come forward? Gentlemen, please come up. I'm going to announce our members. Tyler Bartlett, Desmond Bland, Raymond Burke, Nathan Dickos, Max Keller, Nick Lativa Kiskola, even Evan Link, Felix Lucero, Xander Lucero, Riley Stephen, and Brett Thean? I don't know if I got that right. And Coach Will Lucero, that name is familiar. So, the real football players, of course, soccer. So, these gentlemen here are your state champions from Diamond High School. And I have a few words to share about them, but of any competition, I believe, in the state of Alaska, our, the soccer program is the most contended for. And these gentlemen play in their comp soccer alongside of players from service and players from south. So, they play on the similar teams, but when it comes to high school, they took the field and won it. So, they are your 2018 Diamond Soccer Boys Team Division One State Champions. They beat out, Diamond beat out Colony 1-0 to claim the title in the state tournament. The team finished 14-0 in conference and 18-1-1 overall, including the state cup. Total goals for the year were 69, and goals against, only seven. Is your goalie here, your keeper?
No, he's not.
He graduated, or is that here? Oh.
He went to play for soccer.
Oh, he went to play for soccer. Now you get it. So, to only have seven goals scored against, that keeper's pretty hot. Who's your new one? You have a new one? You're not announced yet, all right. And that competition still goes on. So, let me tell you, the Lynx had two state players of the game, four players named to the all-conference first team, and six players named to the all-conference second team. There were 11 senior players who are off to the next stage in life that couldn't be present. And I could read them as well, but otherwise, we have the 2018 head coach, Barrett, has moved and did not provide details of the championship game because sometimes I like to read the, you know, the colors about the game. But we can have you fill it in if you'd like. Would anyone like to speak about that hot game last spring?
So, we met Colony in the final. It's probably like gets a lot of players that we know, friends, you know, so it's always, it's always good to go out there and see your brothers on the field. And the game went 0-0 all the way through and to overtime, and all the way to PK shootout, where our goalie came up big with two or three saves to send us through, or, you know, win the game for us. So, that was big, but it's always hard to win in a PK shootout because it's so, it's so back and forth. They were such a great team to play against, kept us on our toes the whole entire game, so that was good to see.
Anyone else like to share? All right, is there going to be a, a repeat, gentlemen?
Of course.
Of course, all right. So, with that, we, we'll take a picture, ladies and gentlemen, your Diamond High real football players, right here. And I like those sweatshirts or jerseys with the initials, so I think we need to get one of those, Dr. Bishop.
Okay, you guys ready? It's right here. One, two, three. One more.
Diamond High, thank you. Sure. Next, for our Focus on Staff and Students, are the trainers from OPA. If I call your name, and when I call your name, please come forward. Mary Perez, James Berry, Brian Beecham, Kim Gilmore, Kristy Casteloff, Brittany Bergens, and Lynn Young. And I wanted to share that lots of good things about OPA, and you may have seen some of their marketing on TV, but they provide service not only to the Valley but to Anchorage Schools in keeping our kids safe on the field. For over a decade now, Orthopedic Physicians Alaska, locally owned, or known, rather, as OPA, has provided athletic trainers to Anchorage School District high school athletic programs as part of their service to our community. These certified athletic trainers regularly attend practices and games for all our sports programs at the eight comprehensive high schools, attending roughly 2,700 events a year. These trainers help our athletes prevent injuries through various educational programs, respond to acute injuries at practices and during competition, and follow up with students who are recovering from their sports-related injuries, all at no cost to the district. Last year, this group of OPA trainers responded to 1,377 injuries ranging from concussions to torn ACLs, and logged an impressive 3,976 follow-up encounters. If you've ever attended a sports competition in ASD, you've no doubt seen these dedicated individuals working with our athletes on the sidelines. In addition to the outstanding service these folks provide for our athletes, OPA trainers have also written emergency action plans for the sports facilities on our campuses and worked with our activities assistant principals, athletic directors, as well as coaches, to hold annual emergency rehearsals. In light of all they do for ASD, our sports programs, and our prep athletes, please help me recognize these fantastic athletic trainers from OPA. You make our community great. I would like to share, too, I know and familiar with their work, when we passed the concussion readiness, they really spoke about the safety of kids and helped guide that policy in our state, not only for our city but for all sports teams around the state. So, they are held in high regard, and we certainly appreciate your service, and we want to celebrate you today. Thank you. I'm going to pass the mic. Do I have a taker? All right.
So, they like to be on the sidelines and not talk, but thank you for entrusting your kids with us. Hopefully, we try to prevent the injuries from occurring, but certainly, if they do get hurt, we're happy to help and keep them safe and active on the field. So, thank you for letting OPA take care of your kids.
Thank you so much. Can we get a picture with you guys for our website? The white shirt looks like the leader, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes. Great job, guys.
Okay, our next award is for the Alaska Communications Summer of Heroes students, and I do know that ACS is here representing. Would you like to come forward, ACS representatives, or Summer of Heroes? All right. So, first, I'll bring up Olivia Skelton. Is Olivia here? Yes, she is, there she is, as well as Ashley Perry's here. So, I will read about these young ladies. The Summer of Heroes program recognizes Alaska youth who are doing great things in their local communities. The program is sponsored by Alaska Communications, as well as Boys and Girls Clubs of Alaska, and Boys and Girls Clubs is here as well. Would we like, would you like to come forward, ladies? ACS and Boys and Girls Club right there, please come forward. ACS and Boys and Girls Club, right there, please come forward. Yeah. In its eighth year, the Summer of Heroes program honors youth between the ages of six and 18, each with $1,500 UA scholarship. At ASD, we're proud to have two youth heroes this year, South High Senior Olivia Skelton and Mears Middle School eighth grader Ashley Perry. We've met Ashley before. At age 14, I'll talk about Ashley first, she's already a local leader who is determined, resilient, and sets high standards for others. As the founder of three programs which support those in need, her work is having a notable impact in our Anchorage community. Ashley created a blessing box at her middle school, which contains non-perishable food items and basic hygiene supplies that anyone can access. She is the name and the force behind the Ashley Perry Reading Shelter Program. The program encourages youth to read to animals in the shelters. She also fosters a program that encourages celebrities to visit a hospital in her community during their visit to the last frontier. Before I move to Olivia, I just want to say that Ashley shared at our principals' meeting at the beginning of the year, and I think we're set to really build a ton of blessing boxes all around our school district. Okay, maybe we created a little too much. So she went from one at Mears to 45 in ASD overnight, it seems like. Congratulations. And now, Anchorage High School Senior Olivia is an active teen. She's taking honors and advanced placement courses, and she's president of the National Honor Society, a dancer, a choir soloist, and holds the title of Miss Alaska High School 2018. But one of her top priorities is community service. In fact, she took summer school courses to give herself more time during the regular school year to help others. That's dedication. After going through extensive training, Olivia became one of the youngest basic life support CPR instructors in the state. While volunteering at an assisted living facility, Olivia learned that residents used to receive corsages from Mother's Day, but the program faded away. Though through many late nights after homework and activities, she single-handedly reinstated the program. Oh, that's cool. Olivia is motivated to mobilize resources that already exist in her community, ensuring they reach the locations where they're most needed. She goes above and beyond in everything she does, and she wouldn't have it any other way. Both students have made a remarkable and positive impact on our local community, and we are truly grateful for their work. Thank you for working to make our community a better place and making a difference in the lives of those around you. You are who make ASD great. Thank you so much. And I'm going to pass the mic, and we'll go ahead and hear from Olivia and Ashley, and then maybe some of the sponsors of the program, if you'd like.
Thank you so much for this recognition. I'm honored to be here, and I'd like to thank my parents for supporting me through everything that I do, and, yeah, just thanks so much. Thank my parents, my amazing principal, my siblings, and Dr. Bishop for giving me this opportunity.
And would you all like to speak from your office?
I'm Alana Humphrey with Boys and Girls Club, and this is our eighth year in this partnership with Alaska Communications. And each year, we're amazed by the amazing kids that are nominated for this honor. These are two of, I don't know how many we've, 48 kids that we've looked at over the years. So it's a great program. Thank you, Alaska Communications.
And this one comes with money. Good job, ladies. Thank you for making ASD great.
Board members, I need you to come back. Board members. Ms. Mitchell.
Ladies and gentlemen, there's also a sponsored reception by ACS out in the atria. They invite everyone. Alaska Communications has provided a reception for everyone. Please join us.
I move that the board moves into executive session for the purpose of uncut, contested student hearings, negotiations, and litigation updates. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.